Now four thirty and we'll call the meeting to order. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Someone else will have to give the PPR report because Dr. Holt.
Right.
I was not here for that.
Right, so I will. I'll leave it.
Okay.
Well, I motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. And I did not see anything of issue.
I had one in the library, or converted the library as the one every two years for the year.
That's what I remember saying.
Right, right.
So I can make that change.
And then we did talk about the changing agenda to, is that in here?
We mentioned that it's in the minutes, but I couldn't remember what it referred to, but you reminded me. We talked about putting action in discussion. Please help me remember and I'll get that done for the next.
Okay. Okay. And with that, three minutes. And with that one change? With the new minutes.
Sorry.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next study agenda is public comments. Do you have anyone?
Yes, I'll make the public comments. First of all, I just wanted to say I thought it was very creative of Mr. Zentara to tell us at the last meeting that homelessness had been solved in Decatur. That was such an interesting comment, but I couldn't find the statistics to back that up unfortunately. Then we heard from Mr. Meyer that relationships between the staff here at the library and homeless were impeccable. Again, evidence doesn't back that up. Mr. Meyer himself recently ordered the police to be called on a homeless person for criticizing Donald Trump. Alyssa Hinkle and Katie Edgerson have inspired to have people who quote unquote seem homeless banned from the library for setting down a bag while they used the bathroom or leaving a phone charger unattended. I want to tell you this right sincerely as I know clearly you're a Trump supporter. I want to tell you my condolences on your Lord and Savior today as he's been impeached. But I want you to keep your chin up, wear your MAGA hat with pride, but stop calling the police on people who disagree with your political views. It has been a 2019 of great note for this board of trustees. You've had three articles written by statewide advocates, the Edgar County watchdogs. You've had Brian Byers talk about you numerous times, including talking about how ungrateful you are and how you always have your hand out for more. Even the city council has talked about you, from David Horn talking about the nosedive of circulation that the library has had since Rick Meyer came into power, to Pat McDaniel and former Mayor Terry Howley convincing each other that the library would be literally closed within ten years. And then we have Councilwoman Lisa Gregory who said that she had just assumed never speak to this board again because of the way you conducted yourselves during the parking lot situation. That was all in emails, all acquired via the Freedom of Information Act, all fact. I hope that in 2020, you can start to focus on what really matters, which is the patrons of this library, not its management. We live in a society where SNAP benefits are being cut and people are going hungry, yet you are approving meeting after meeting steakhouse dinners, lavish trips, hotel. Are you surprised about the steakhouse dinners? Because it's right in the check register, you understand that, right? And you approved it. You voted to approve every single one of those, $400 pizza parties. Money being wasted hand over hand constantly. I hope in 2020, you start to do the right thing. You actually had some really good ideas at the other meetings, and then unfortunately they were shot down. But at least we're seeing that you brought some good ideas to the table, which I've seen no one else do. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Zentara and Mr. Sexton for almost making it to half the meetings in 2019. Almost made it. Louise Green has also missed quite a few as well. I think according to the bylaws, she's missed enough to where she's out.
I think that's all, we're wrapping up comments.
Okay, I'm gonna make a note of that time though, and if it's wrong, I mean it's an open meeting, I violate. So are you sure my time's up?
I'm totally exhausted.
Oh, I know how you feel. I know how you feel. But I really just want to say Alex Winter in Lost Boys is one of my favorite roles, so congratulations. You're welcome. See you in 2020.
Just like to, the, the, I can say, I can know for a fact that Mike Sexton and I attended, this is false information.
All of your work.
First of all.
Well, we don't, we don't really have to address it.
Okay, okay.
Because we all know facts.
It's in the record.
We have to, we have to, we have to.
We have the records.
Okay. All right, moving along to written communications and the public.
No, you guys have it.
Okay. My question is of course.
Well, I want to talk about, I, first of all, how I'm presented to succeed and see if I can give any feedback on that. Is this helpful? I know there's a lot, there's a lot of pages there, but actually the same information I've always given you just made more, made more. I thought it'd be a good idea to move on to here too. This is November circulation by, by audience. So the blue is 2018 and the orange is 2019. So we had a tiny, tiny little increase in November overall. That was mostly children's materials. So they showed a little bit, about a 10 percent, but there were Christmas books last year too. Keep in mind, we don't compare it to the month before. We keep in, we compare it to the same month a year before. So nearly a 10% increase in children's materials, although it's still a relatively small overall portion of our circulation. So for a one half a percent increase from last November. So this is our projection for 2019. We should be fairly close to accurate right now. And what we're projecting is a decrease overall. Little decrease in children's, pretty big in young adult and in adult. And this is, this is that same information as a percentage. So you can see that children's is less than 2% decline. What I'm seeing is that statewide trend is four, five percent overall decline. And we're looking at about a six. And this is the 12-month trend, so the last 12 months compared to the 12 months prior to that. Also, we're seeing declines in just about everything that's pretty similar since we're, you know, the projection is about the same as the 12-month for this time of year. Change in 12-month trend, again, children's is declining at the lowest rate, young adult at the by far highest rate. So this is by material type, physical stuff, not, not electronic stuff. We've got video materials, video materials up here. This is our total physical circulation. I don't know why, kind of the bottom, I'll get it down. Other physical items, it's a very small portion, it's a big increase, but it's a very small portion. And the bread and butter is still books, but that's a new column. So by material type, the change is, this, this is extremely misleading. This looks great, right? 307% increase, but if you look, the raw numbers are very, very small. That's essentially hotspots because we didn't have them before. So magazines went up for a second month in a row, after having been in free fall for most of the year. So, and this is our projection for the year, which is again very similar to what we're gonna see on the 12-month trend. So again, very misleading because this, this isn't as good as it looks because it's a very small portion. And magazines and audio are the best. That's audio, physical audio material, so music and books.
Are there other, are there other physical items that we could look into? Learning, like telescopes or, I mean, I was.
Kits, yes, absolutely, absolutely. That's something I've been talking to Alyssa about and looking into, learning kits.
I, I, you know, we were getting rid of some of our DVDs from when our kids were younger and we went to our neighbor's house and they were like, we don't have a DVD player. They have little kids and then my brother, I tried to send him some stuff and he was like, don't mail it to me, we don't even have the CD player.
The problem is there are a lot of, there's still a lot of stuff you can't get streaming, you know? And so in some ways, we're, and we find that that stuff goes out. A person who was in charge of film selection about two people ago, before she left here, she pulled probably 200 DVDs off the shelf and I, and people expressed concern about what they were and I did some, I looked into their circulation. We had, you know, French film noir from the 60s that had been checked out three, like three, four times a year. So that's about the only place you're gonna get it, you know? So, but this is our 12-month trend by material type. So again, you're looking at, audio and magazines are a big decline. That's the, those were the raw numbers. This is the percentages. They're bringing it down, but they're such a small, they can't, they don't explain the overall trend. It'd be nice to be able to say that's what's, that's the favorite.
Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Let me test a moment.
Not sure. So, but it's not, it's not, doesn't explain everything. The, the good news is in electronic content use, again, this is November. Except, so overall was down a little bit due to this. This is stuff like databases. This is successful retrieval of electronic information, isn't stuff that you check, you check out with a time period for it to go back, like an ebook or audio. Those, those are still decreasing.
Testing again, one, two.
Seems to be working. But, but this really did bring a big number. And this is, this is the only month this has happened all year, so.
Was that where we had any trouble with the database? Did that?
No, but we, as we, as we change what databases we have and make some.
Testing, one, two. Testing, one, two.
Hey, can somebody get them to stop that?
I don't know.
Okay. There's time to do that. So this is November, use of the, like the circulating electronic materials, the things that you check out with a time, for a time period, like an ebook or an audio. That's up 9%, but we had a big decline in the, in the databases. So when you change databases, some report in very different ways. Some of them, what they give us is the number of people who logged in and some of them, it's the number of items that were, we had, and some of them are inconsistent in other important. Novelist, I've thrown out of the statistics because Novelist at one point was reporting these gaudy numbers, like 175,000 a year, it just didn't happen. And we've never gotten to the bottom of the line, we've talked to them many times. But I don't, I don't have a ready explanation for this this month. So here's the 12-month trend. So actually that, this, this one month brought the successful retrieval of electronic information down into a decline just a little bit. But the use of circulating electronic materials is still, is still high in the 12-month trend. So that's up 14%. And that one really bad month got us down to a little 1% decline. And here's our projection for electronic resources used versus what we actually did in 2018. 2019 is in the orange. So overall, we're projecting a big increase in that. But again, it's a very small portion of the overall, about 11%. And the projected change in 2019 changed from 2018 in electronic content use. Circulating materials is up 9%. Total collection use, so that's you add it all together in November, this is this November. But the scale of this is a little bit misleading. The percentages will tell you a little bit more. This is the last 12 months versus the 12 months prior to that. Again, the scale is a little misleading. Interlibrary loan. This is, this is where it gets a little interesting because there's been some, some things changing lately that we have, some, can't call it a trend yet, but some things happening that we haven't seen much of. Interlibrary loans received from other libraries is going up and that's been, that's been consistently going down. Still less than what we send, but that percentage is, is narrowing. So our total interlibrary loan transactions are down, but received from other libraries is up about 8%, 9% totals. And this is our projection for annual versus the 2018 actual. 2019 projection is in orange, so total transactions are, we're projecting down. But the from other libraries is up a little bit, still much smaller than what we sent. We are a net lender and our library remained so for a while.
We're a net lender.
We are a net lender. Yep.
Is that because we're lending to smaller libraries or because you have a big collection?
Bigger libraries tend to be net borrowers, which to me is against intuition, but we're not. We're in that, we are a net lender. So we are definitely lending more than we're borrowing.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe it's the collection that's had, so it'd be interesting.
It could be, you know, but in a, in a, in a system that has, which is the largest consortium in North America, you know, even small libraries, you know, one of them's gonna have what you're, what you're looking for.
Do you know how to, like what percentage, like so when you put a request in, how does it choose which library it comes from? Is it the closest library or is it just?
Well, there's an algorithm and I think, I wouldn't be happy to get Susan Palmer to come here and talk to you guys about it sometime. She does, she does all that and she is a ball fire and she does all, she's in charge of all the delivery and how they, how that's, how that goes about and she's a, she's a great speaker.
They definitely use that function.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, you think about, she's got to coordinate the logistics between 450 libraries and she's done it in six days a week now for some libraries, so she's done an amazing job, but.
It'd be interesting too to, you know, I mean, to find, to understand, you know, for if, if this library's a net lender, is it, is it materials kind of across the entire spectrum of materials? Or is it specific to, you know, to some niche, niche of material?
Cooking, young adults.
I'll see if I, I'll see if we have the capacity to run that report. I, either report I run, it doesn't, it just gives you a total number. But maybe that's.
Like focus points, like, you know, one of the hotspots.
I'm gonna know that, because that's, that's an interesting question, but I want to get to some more of this stuff.
You know, it may be a stupid question, but does it matter if you're a net lender or a net borrower?
Even financially, you could argue that if you're a net borrower, you're getting a better deal than if you're a net lender.
Although if you're a net lender or tend to think that you're doing a good job of grooming your collection because it's, a lot of people want to access it.
But, you know, ultimately that is a greater collection for your own community, you know?
That's true, that is true.
So this is our 12-month trend. You see the from is just a slightly, from other libraries is slightly up, but still way behind what we send.
Okay, I have one more comment on that borrowing lending is that my book club folded this year, but half my book club live, less than half of my book club lives in Decatur Public Library. The rest lives in Mountain Zion and they would always borrow stuff for our, you know, because one person had the Mountain Zion copy and so the two or three would come and borrow the copies from here. So do you, I was curious, are we a net, are we a net lender because we're lending to Mountain Zion?
This is only stuff that's sent, this is only stuff that's sent by delivery.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is that they order it to Mountain Zion. And I'm wondering if, just if, you know, like other friends of mine are in book clubs that, you know, half of them live in Foresight or some people in Warrensburg are, you know, some of that maybe our community is actually having a group of people that are getting together, but the other libraries don't really have what they want. I don't know if the majority of the net lending stuck around here or if it's going everywhere.
That, you know, as far as I know, I don't have any way to run a report on that either. But I could talk to the tech people at, at IHL.
But if that's the case, then we actually are still grooming our collection for our community and the.
Right. It's contiguous, geographic. And this is a visualization of sent to received. So these are sent, the blue is sent, the orange is received and that was in November compared to last November. That's the 12-month trend. And that's our projection for, for 2019 as compared to the actual 2018. So that's 53, 47. New patron registrations. This is the last 12 months. This is the 12 months prior to that. This is what we're projecting for 2019. December's not a big month. That's what we did in total for 2018 and here's this month compared to November of 2018.
But now our population is shrinking in Decatur as well, so that would make sense.
What's the opposite of that?
Yeah. Well, arguably, arguably it could, but again, these are new, new patron registrations. It could be somebody who used to be, used to have a card and, you know.
But if our population is shrinking, we have less people coming into town.
Yes, well, I mean, I can, in fact, there will be a lot of search numbers too. So these are the changes in, in, in a form of percentage for new patron registration. So November was down almost 5%. We're projecting a 9% decline. Last 12-month trend was a 9% decline.
Does it include, I mean, I'm assuming it includes children's cards and like you guys have been going into the schools with your report, so.
Number visitor security gate. We had the, we've got tech that sent a tech yesterday and was working on our security gates. We had a couple of, one, holes in the actual security and then two, are concerned with the count. We, Matt, not, not, Matt has randomly watched the new video counter. You can see the counts coming, clicking as the counter following as you in real time and the count. And he says that one is accurate. Problem isn't that one. The problem is the one on our security gates. So they're gonna look into possible recalibration of it. Yeah, the, there's still apples to apples when I'm talking about change because I'm, you know, we assume it was doing the same thing last year. But the other thing is that when he really looked into the reports, and I don't know if I mentioned this last year, there were counts while we weren't open.
Right.
So he's pulled those out and I've got a, completely redone my statistics for the last two years on just hours we were open. So the gate count has.
I know, does it get affected too? Because I know people like to sit and chit chat right at the gate.
It can, it can. It won't with the video one on the line, but. So November, November visitors, again, that's per, this is per the security gate that was down almost 8%. Well, November was our biggest month of construction. Projected change for the year is 2% decline. Local history specific. So if they don't have a counter, this requires people signing in. So we're looking at a pretty large decline annually, a very strong possibility of human error here. So we may consider, if we want to really get to these numbers, then I consider wanting to buy a people counter for their.
For their, that's probably a good idea.
Projected change for the year is a 21% decline. Programs. Adult has been declining a little bit. YI is up and children's is up. Overall for the month, we had an increase. Change in programs, 64% increase in children's, 11% overall. But we're looking at a 44% decline in adult programs, 10% in adult programs. Projected 2019 is pretty good news. The orange is 2019.
That's because we stopped doing the milk color, right?
We still do, they still have it, it's just not our program anymore.
Okay.
So the projected change, children's program is up 94%. A lot of that is due to one event, you know, with seven, 700, 800 people out here in the park for the summer break to take off. So that's it. And then, you know, anything you want to talk about on the narrative report, I'd be happy to. Last month, I did talk a bit about the cost of border requests and the issue with that has been, you know, as I, as I sit and think through, do my back of the envelope calculations, I keep thinking of more things. So in other words, when, if I'm talking about to the attorney, I was just going to count the attorney fees, except I'm getting paid too. Same with emails to, to, between attorneys. We get charged for the email, but there's a cost to the library on the library side also. There's a labor cost there. So I'm hoping to get a fairly complete report to you guys in January or February. Happy to answer any other questions about.
And of course, as I was, my, my assist was, do we need somebody to help you with that? That was my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay right now.
Okay.
So on the, like the young adults, do you have a plan to like increase that or what?
We talked to, you know, our de facto, the underbooked and adult library today about, you know, more aggressively pursuing some of the things that she's, some of the ideas that she's talked about, including the, having a team advisory board, we're partnering with Milt on that.
We talked about that last time.
And so, yeah, I talked to her today about it and she's, she's all in, so hopefully I'll be talking to you next month about the connections that we're running there.
And how do you, you know, it's not large numbers with circulation going down. You've checked with other libraries to see where they're at and then what is the, I mean, it's correct to have the numbers, but what does that tell us and is there anything that we're gonna do about it or is there, you know?
I'm open to, I'm open to see, I mean, I think part of it is something that we touched on, I think, two months ago, or it might have been last month, but, you know, one of the sort of unwritten themes at the ILA conference this year that's been talked about a lot is that, you know, we probably, we collectively, public libraries, put too much emphasis on, on programs as opposed to the collection because still 90% of the people who come through the door are coming through the door for the collection. So maybe some, you know, we do pretty good promotions for the programs, maybe we can promote books. And I said, you know, we've got all these posters about, about programs and we never have posted books and I was pointing out, and one of our, one of our clerks has actually been working on that and has begun that. So, but I think it's, there's a lot of things that we can and should be doing to more. Not that we shouldn't do the program stuff.
Well, we talked about having the content, a reading contest or if you read this, this and that.
And I've got, I've got Project Read are interested in participating. I'm hoping that you guys would be, send me, send me a recommendation there. I got staff willing and ready to do it, set up displays, you know, it could be, you know, Sepia's, you know.
That'll be why, you know.
Well, I'm talking about though, the contest with, doing a contest for a certain amount of time to get people to check out even different books.
We do that. We have a few of them throughout the year.
Of them like the German.
Right.
And I just thought there was, we were talking about that time about.
Well, I think we were talking about incentivizing the, last time we talked about incentivizing the, the first time we tried to get any staff recommendations, it was, honestly, it was like pulling teeth. What told people were, were really, really enthusiastic about participating and others, it just, it took a while to get it out. So we thought of incentivizing that in some way. Because I talked, or I talked about when I worked at Barnes and Noble, there was whoever's book sold the most, whoever's recommended book sold the most got a gift card. there was whoever's book sold the most, whoever's recommended book sold the most got a gift card or something. So we could talk to the friends about something like that, and getting staff more on board with that. But we do have reading, uh, programs throughout the year, a couple, we've got summer and, and winter, and there are prizes given out, I mean, some pretty nice things that the friends pay for, for us. And it's growing in leaps and bounds, but it's still pretty small, at least for the, for the adults. For the, for the kids, it's huge, in our, in the winter.
Which is the opposite, I mean, more for the adults.
And, you know, maybe, I, maybe there's a better way to promote it, but it's, it's growing every year, but it's still relatively small. I mean, it's doubled...
It's like 170.
Right, it was like, it was like 20-something the first year, and then it got to about 50, and then 100, 170.
What are the adult, I just, what are the adult programs, like, I know the kids.
So anything from, like, there's crafting things with Katie, to speakers about history, to, you know, we had, we've had several authors come through.
Well, no, I've done, I've done that, where they spoke, local authors.
We had the TEDx talks, we've had, you know...
There's been like a healthy eating program that one of my friends went to.
We've got, we've got yoga on Tuesdays.
I'm talking in really, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm beating a dead horse here, I don't know. I, I know we talked about last time, like, having contests between groups, reading different books in the library, and getting points for reading specific books, like older books.
Oh, older books?
Yeah, we, so you would get those books checked out. Or maybe sponsor, maybe, maybe do something with book clubs, um, coming into a library, or, you know, having one big consortium at one time.
There's the big read every year, that's, you know, that, and...
Like one, one city?
Yes, and, and some, some communities have a lot of success with it, some communities don't.
I think there, I think we need to come up with something a little more creative.
Okay, what about, what about something that is just, you know, when I was reading all that material that you had me, had us read, not just me, all of us read, they were talking about advertising the library. What, I mean, what about just simply putting up a big billboard downtown for a month or two, saying, Decatur Public Library, it's warm, come read, or, and I know it sounds really weird, but I think sometimes people forget about the library. And maybe if we remind the people that the library's...
I think billboards are a great idea, they're surprisingly expensive. But that doesn't mean the, you know, the library's, your friends couldn't kick it.
Well, I'm just wondering, there's billboards that are empty, that maybe they would do a public service, and allow, so you can, well, I don't, well, Lamar just left, and, I mean, he left for the public, they had an office up in Fortsack, they're gone.
I bought, I bought billboards before, and it's, it's not a billboard.
I think, I, I'll talk to the, the folks who have the creative minds about, you know, more reading programs and, and, and contests. I don't, I, I do like the billboard idea, it's just...
I just think it might be, it just remind, might remind people, come down here, it's warm, you're gonna know, like, privately, we've got great books. I don't know, something catchy and fun and, um...
Maybe what we should do...
And then, I also think, I also think that this is, it's too late for this now, and obviously, this is something that I've just gotten involved in volunteering with someone at Decatur Public Schools, is that I think we should have a Christmas break reading program for, for the kids, we do. And, I mean, if we, if we, that would be something that would have been a great billboard, if we had, you know, bring your kids in for some fun time at the library. It was actually, I used to do that with my friends, we used to come, and we used to spend three hours here on Sundays, almost every Sunday is winter.
We've been doing winter one, we've been doing winter one a couple of years now, but I, I also, I think these are, these are worthwhile ideas, some good ideas and doable ideas, but I think there's also some simple things. We've had a, we've had a, and, you know, financially, we've had to in the past, had to. We've had a, a real problem with ordering multiple copies of the same book. Staff has been very hesitant to do that, but we sometimes will have 100 people on waiting lists. Now, that makes for a patron who's unsatisfied.
And not gonna come back.
So, you know, we can't buy 100 copies, but, you know, we, I, I think we need to think more about 10, that, that probably would be the high end.
Or the low, like the lease, too. Do you like that?
Yeah, I don't like that idea, and it's, it's, most, most libraries I've talked to who've done that have, have gotten rid of it pretty quick, all the...
Wilmington may still do it, maybe it's Georgia.
Okay, I have an idea. So say you're buying those books, the, you know, 10 books, this book that's super popular, we've got 100 people on the waiting list. Why not take, you know, so you're gonna leave one or two in circulation, and then take the rest out? And you've got book clubs, like, why not say, book club bundle?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and actually, and, yeah, and actually, IHLS has looked into a grant for that, too, so, but, yes. I totally agree that we've, we've all, we've hesitated to buy a copy for each of our book club members. And I would still, our nonfiction book club, they get some esoteric stuff once in a while, I still hesitate to buy 15 copies, but...
No, no, what I'm thinking is, is, you know, if somebody like, like me has a book club that has eight members in it, your whole book club can come in and take out that book, like, a book club bundle.
Yeah.
That, where, like, source all of them for them, and have them ready on a certain day, like, I mean, if you, like, let's say you have a book club, and you're like, oh, this book, but like you said, you gotta get it from outside, and of course, right, so we source those books for them.
No, but I mean, I know, I know some, like, my, my, my friend's book club always reads older books that are like three, four, five years old. That would be like the perfect thing, that book is no longer super popular, hey, your book club can come in and take out all these books.
Do you make recommendations to book clubs?
And then sell them.
Well, they would come in and register at a book club, and you could make recommendations, like, call them up and say, hey...
Well, book clubs, they like to make, no, book clubs, they like to make their own, everybody's very...
We, we certainly would, I mean, we, we absolutely would, if they...
But like, I mean, even just, like, your group, like, you'd be like, hey, well, we got all these, you know, that, you know, they could all check them out here, if we sourced all of them, I know we may have boundaries, but I, you know, still people out here in Chicago town, so...
I think it might be worthwhile if a couple of you and I met with Alyssa to talk about some of these ideas.
I was also going to go, we need, we need somebody to...
Right, right, I agree.
Two, two of you, or if anything is...
No, yeah.
So...
I'm not marketing, and it just seems like...
To be a...
Perfect.
Yeah, all right, so I will...
I'm gonna have to pack them up in this, and I'm volunteering, guys.
So I will, I will set it, it might be after the first of the year, but I'll set up a meeting with the four of us, Alyssa and...
After the first of the year is better for me, because my daughter comes home tomorrow, and...
Wow.
We're not doing it now.
Well, and if anybody has ideas, they can come, so, you know, Rick and...
There's, there's also another item on here, just like you briefly mentioned, Bob Smith let the mayor and I know on Monday that some family issues, that he's not gonna have such a appointment. I, I did make a recommendation to the mayor, if you want to hear it, I'll, I'll tell you, Stacy Young from Ameri. She does, she's a PR for Ameri, and strikes me as, I don't know her well, the mayor said she knows her very well, and she'd be great, so...
Very enthusiastic, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So, and this, this little subcommittee does dovetail into our strategic plan, which we were, we're trying to dust off and, and kind of hold up again, and...
I, I would, I would personally, just, and something that I would be willing to just help out with is early childhood literacy, and not talking early, like preschool, I'm talking kindergarten through third grade. Some of our schools, it's really sad how hard these kids are, and if there's a way that we can bring them into the library and help, help out the schools.
I think that's, I think it's two separate issues, but I think that one needs to be followed up on.
And that would actually, that would actually help our community, I mean, the more education...
And I emailed Amanda, and there were, I mean, pop prints is an option, but it's not as one-on-one, it's maybe some kids need reading, so...
But I will, I will follow up on that with you too, because I think we need to, you know, again, we talked about how this, when we developed the strategic plan, we resolved not to change a thing in general, but you were gracious enough to say, hey, I was one of those people, I've seen...
And I was wrong about that. Okay, I guess, I mean, don't get rid of that, we need to add.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're going to move along, there's a great discussion, there's a lot of good ideas out there, and...
And this, this thing is just a raw, a raw idea, or...
Unless you'd like to...
I didn't have the money, that's awful. Okay, well, let's get where we're at. Okay, come on to giving the Personnel Policy and Health Relations Committee meeting, the board. We've already talked a little bit about employees, and we have a list of employees that we've had for November.
This was up until the date of the PDPR meeting.
Right, right, yeah, but it goes on that central people. So, Personnel Update, how can I remember, Rick, what, can I think of any highlights?
Uh, we're still working with the, I'm told that after the first of the year, we should, we should have the issue resolved with the civil service hires.
Okay.
We do have a, now a halftime page opening that wasn't expected, but we have a registry for that, a civil service registry, so we should be able to, fairly quickly, just by going through the list.
Okay, very good. Okay, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, I don't think we really had, we didn't discuss a lot on that particular topic.
No, I'm encouraged to look at those, those ones, to...
Right, yeah. Ethics or inorganic policy, this has been an actionable item here, we should work...
And it'll need to be a voice vote, or a roll call vote.
Roll call, right. So we have for us, we looked at this a few times, and basically, it just is to make very clear what our position is on gifts and other ethics issues, like, what are the activities?
Take it, take it straight from the...
So this is, this is just, there's nothing different than statue?
Right, right.
The preamble was written by the attorney, and the rest of it is taken straight from the question.
Moralizing, of course.
Okay, okay. I know that we accept, I second that.
At this point, we will go to the voice, I'll just go down, we're going down this little list down here. I, I'm gonna go, I.
I.
Aye.
I was just going down the list.
Supposed to be, officially supposed to be a roll call, she's supposed to call, call the roll, okay, call the roll.
Samantha Carroll?
Aye.
It was green, it's absent. Oh, it's an absent. Michael Saxon?
Aye.
Amy is not here, and Sophia?
Aye.
And Gregson?
Aye.
Okay. I suspect December is probably not a good month to try to do a roll call, but we will, we have to, it still passes, I do believe.
Yes, it's, yeah. On the other forums, yeah. On the other forum.
So that gets that little, little business issue solved. Trustee fax file, and this was, let's see, right.
And I, and I'm still gonna recommend a full discussion on that, on this here, it's just here as a, as a placeholder, but I've got, I've gotten comments from a few of you, and I'd like to get, you know, at least a few comments from everybody that I can compile, I can put in our grant application, and then we can have a, a more organized discussion about it in January. That's, I, I think otherwise it'd be a pretty, could be a pretty free-wheeling discussion that could... And I, and I talked to the, the person, Gina Vannick, who manages this grant, and she said, "That's perfectly acceptable way to do this."
I'll ignore you, it's a copier.
I've got comments from a few of you, I appreciate it, the time, the time you put into it, and I've gotten thoughtful responses, so thank you for that.
And it does dovetail into our strategic plan project that we're moving forward in January. And, so strategic plan update, as we've talked about, well, we've got this little handout here.
Yeah, this is just kind of where we are as of early November, and, you know, some things are essentially checked off, and other things we've kind of gotten bogged down on, and there are a couple of things that I, I'm not sure we even want to continue to pursue. But my recommendation is gonna be that in January, we begin to look at the strategic plan itself, and see if it's still a plan that we want to implement, see if there's any tweaks that we want to make. I think we can safely remove the things that we've achieved, and, and perhaps there's a couple of things that, you know, we want to either look at it a different way, or get rid of all the gifts, so. But a couple of things we've done extremely well on, of course, the, working with the city, provide options for appearing in parking lots, creating room for the outline building, sure, for customer service and friendliness, for, for, to check out reference areas, examine options for eliminating or minimizing the deterrent effect of library fines. All those very well, a lot of them close to that level. And there's some things that we just have not made progress on, or even we've gone backward on a little bit. And, you know, the one we talked about the most was the, consider opportunity to develop remote access or return locations for materials. Oh, you are here, okay.
It was at the PDPR meeting.
Oh, was it?
Partly in light of this, I mean, when, when we review, begin to review the, the strategic plan itself, it can be in light of this, but also, you know, some things we may say, wow, we're doing terrible on it, but still something we need to do.
So, I mean, my opinion on that particular one is, like, maybe tweaking it to, like, I gave him some literature about, like, the curbside pickup, like, St. Louis does curbside pickup, so I grabbed one of their flyers, and then, or even, like, like, there, I mean, I know there are a lot of people, volunteers in this community, but maybe use, using those resources to, like, take a collection to those nursing homes, or... And so that would, I mean, that would not check the box, but it would help remove...
It certainly does the remote access, it doesn't, it doesn't help so much with the, the return collect, with the return location. And that's the one that is the most, that's the one we heard specifically about during focus groups and, and the retreat we had, was people saying, you know, "I miss those, I miss those drop boxes all over town, and I don't blame them." But those are, that's the one that's, there's a, a fairly high labor cost with a fairly low benefit. And I'm not saying no benefit, obviously, there is a benefit.
I'm not a fan of throwing our books into return boxes all over town.
I don't prefer return boxes either, although there will may, it, it does lead to some unnecessary damage at times.
I just, I, I also feel like the nice thing about people coming to our events up here is it brings people downtown, and... Our downtown needs people to come to it. I, I, I love the fact that it's harder to find parking downtown.
They'll come into here, though, as well, and probably have something else, so... Yeah, there's a balance there.
And see an exhibit about an area of books and clubs, or something.
It was, I, I, you know, I get the convenience of it, it's not a practice. So those are the, I mean, overall, I'd say fairly positive, although we've kind of gotten bogged down the last few months. I, I think that, considering from where we started in 2017, we've made very good progress, and in some, in some cases, exceeded the goals that were set, so...
And the most exciting thing that came out of this discussion that we already talked about was the proposed internship with somebody from Millican, to kind of work with our young adult. The concept being that, that having someone closer to their age, you know, would be...
I think, I think we need a space, I think that's the biggest problem.
And that goes into space.
I agree, bringing that, that's the, that's the...
There's two, there's multiple counts.
So, so let's, let's talk about that, though. So that's part of the welcoming environment, right?
Right, exactly.
Is remodeling. We've got several options in front of us. There's also grant money to be had at, at, uh, this year, okay? So, uh, fifty million earmarked state, uh, state monies for library remodeling and/or construction. Obviously, we need the city's blessing on anything we do that's structural changes or anything like that. Uh, but the fact that the city owns it does not disqualify us from the grant, uh, because we have a long-term lease. So I, I, I looked at each, each library has an index, uh, for this grant and our index is point six eight. I mean, we, we, we are eligible for up to sixty-eight percent of the cost of the project, which, so for a five million dollar project, that's three point four million dollars. I don't think we can, uh, you know, five million isn't drawn out of half, but I don't think we can not, you know, if this is really something we wanna do.
We need to look at this.
That we, you know, this money might not be available next year, so, uh, in 2020.
I, I, I just, you know, from what I've heard from, my, my daughter loves books so much that it doesn't bother her at all, but other girls that were her age, they felt uncomfortable being downstairs with the patrons, the other patrons.
Spaces, absolutely.
Not, um, you know, and then they didn't want to be upstairs with the little kids.
Exactly.
So they need their own space.
Yep.
And, and then the parents were like, well, they don't want to come anymore because they have to go check out their books. And I'm like, oh geez, I'm like, go look for a book and then leave, you know, big deal.
Is there a way to, like, is it only for, like, building materials or is it for, like, shelving and?
It's furniture.
Okay, because, I mean, like, I don't know how, I don't know how quickly we can get a response from about the back of the building, but I would be cool with, like, flexible shelving, like, if you can move things around, like, kind of make it a little bit more dynamic.
Well, keep in mind the space plan, the space plans have been developed.
Right, right.
We've got, we've got, uh, several options from which to choose and, uh.
I think we need to revisit those as part of our strategic plan, you know, experience.
So, uh, I, I just think that, you know, and the, the, the grant application is due in April. So, uh, I've got Robert looking into the details of it and we're gonna meet after the first of the year to see the feasibility of, of getting rid. Uh, there are a couple of applications already in, but only a couple according to, according to McCormick, our, uh, the director of the state library.
Would you need help? Like, I don't know.
Boy, it's not, it's, can't be one person's job.
Right.
I mean, it's a, uh, Robert's our primary grant writer, uh, and has the most experience. But I've written some pretty big grants too in the past. It's, it's definitely something if you want, it's gonna be a competitive grant. This isn't a check off the box and if you got all the box checked, you, it's gonna be, we're gonna pick the best.
Who's gonna give out one?
Uh, no, no, several. They, they all, yeah, they've got, they've got fifty million, so.
Right.
Once the, once the money's gone. Once the money's gone, uh, but, uh, you know, we could be.
We're definitely gonna hit the deadline and be a part of the hit for five hundred thousand, fifty thousand if it's anything.
Yeah, I mean, if only, I mean, if we could just get, I mean, shelving, I like, shelving is like one of my priorities, but like, I like.
And it is eligible, I mean, all furnishings, including shelving, are, are eligible for this.
Okay.
So, so do you, do you have specifics that, I mean, you know, the work that was done earlier this year on the Nikki Library Board inviting for entry? Um, there, there was kind of a broad range of things that could be done and therefore a broad range of money that could be spent.
Exactly.
Has it been narrowed down anymore?
No, uh, we've had some, you know, there was some disagreement on this board about, you know, how big or small that project should be. There was some disagreement about how the fundraising should be handled. We've had, uh, Ms. Stockwell has been working with, uh, Ms. Stewart from the foundation on that specific kind of fundraising approach. And I think they've kind of come to a compromise, but I think the fact that this money is available just changes everything. I think it's, you know, you don't know whether it's gonna be available in 2021, you know, so.
Especially their launch plans.
If, if, if it wasn't something we were thinking about doing, who cares? But we have been and we've been, we've been talking about it and, you know, I think it's time, uh, to, to make some decisions.
But, but you, the example you gave, you know, five million dollars, the grant would be the sixty-five or sixty-eight percent. You know, there's still the community, you're in the library.
Still a lot of fundraising to do.
There's a lot of fundraising that's to be done to do a five million dollar project.
Absolutely, and that's where, and I think you and, you and Ms. Stockwell were kind of on the same page. You gotta find out the capacity first. Ms. Stewart, uh, believes that, you know, you get your project first and then you go figure out the capacity.
I think you, I think you get your project first and, and then you say, this is how much money we want, this is the end date, this is what we want.
You have to scale it down, you scale it down.
I, I, I truly believe that if you have a firm project in mind and the amount of money it's gonna cost and the amount of money you want.
It's easier to raise the money.
It's much easier and people know exactly what their money's going for.
You said pictures, you've got pictures, you've got drawings, you've got artist renderings, you've got, you know, you've got three D, uh, virtual tours of what it would look like. And, you know, that would cost three thousand dollars and would pay for itself, I think, very.
I think so, and I also, and I also believe, I mean, it would be great to do that because he, as you said, you emptied off the top shelves of our library because nobody's checking out. Personally, I'm not gonna climb up there to look at what's on the top shelf. And it's also, I think, a little bit of a hazard, it's, it's something that could be a liability for us as well. It would be nice to lower our bookshelves and, and then, and then have them full. Well, they are, they are full, uh, but they're, you know, the, the top shelves, which can't be used.
Well, Ellie, when I, cause I did go to, I did visit St. Louis Library last month, one of the branches, um, and I've been to the Central as well, but they, they had some shelving that had, like, books where you could just lay the front covers. So you could, you know, take those, you know, books that have them checked out and then you can see the covers of them. So, and then they still have a little bit of shelving, like a couple of those a little bit higher, but, I mean, that's the bookshelf kind of, you know, bookstore kind of approach to.
Yeah, and nobody's going down low either, cause I'm telling you, I'm not getting down that low.
But I was looking at them and I was like.
The bookstore, the bookstore approach, bookstore feel, kind of arguments, you know, I, I always have to remind people and Borders closes doors forever.
Right.
Uh, and bookstores are failing all over the place, you know, and Borders libraries are not, so. Yeah, they do some things really, they do some things better than us, but, uh.
I'm not thinking about the bookstore approach, I'm thinking about practicality here.
Yeah.
I'm not getting up there to that top shelf.
Well, and it's the same thing, if I have my child with me, I'm gonna pick what's, like, what's the closest and what's, you know, convenient, cause she's just like running away from me, so I'm just like, grab her.
But where are you going to make the decision, um, or a recommendation on what should?
Bring it back to you guys and.
What should be done with, but, you know, what's the project that we wanna?
But that's, that's, again, the capital, those capital projects are, are, are board decisions, so.
We need to make the family decision.
My, my, my strong recommendation is that we revisit those and that we, you know, that we make a, a decision on the direction we wanna go.
Wouldn't that not have to be done certainly in the first quarter to allow to?
Absolutely, but the, you know, the, the, the grunt work's been done. You know, you've got, you've got several plans to, from which to choose, uh, and, you know, they're ready to go. Product architecture is still ready to go on developing, you know, work through the details, uh, and they're ready anytime, they, you know, so. Uh, and it's paid for, so, uh, that's a good thing too. So I just think it's time to, you know, even a building subcommittee, uh, would be, would be worth doing, but, I, I mean, if we're gonna do it, this is, this is a, an ideal time. I mean, when there's, when there's that kind of money available, again, sixty-eight percent of your project, uh, and, you know, leaving that thirty-two percent to cover through.
I think that would bring people on too, having this place be.
That's just with everything that we're trying to do.
Yeah, but again, that also will, will, you know, will need some, a, a city blessing at least. So, I mean, I talked with, uh, I've talked to John a little bit about it and talked to Scott a little bit about it, but now it's.
Very good, I, I, we've had a lot of good discussion tonight and we're way behind schedule. Sorry. Okay, um, Finance and Property Committee report, Greg, you kind of almost launched into your area, but, um.
Just, just very quick, there was some discussion on parking lot, uh, short discussion, parking lot essentially is finished. There's some, uh, you know, additional work that we've done, you know, come springtime, which I think was the landscaping or, you know, planting of grass and so on. The capital, there was a discussion of capital, I think that maybe Stockwell had, had raised a, had a read, uh, you know, the, the idea of making this a sort of, maybe short and longer term capital of, of the facility. And there's, and there's really two types of capital. There's, you know, the capital that is required to show up the facility, which would be, you know, more city funds. And then there's the capital that library itself would invest, you know, like the shelving or, or, uh, equipment and so on. There's a schedule in the packet and as I understand, this schedule's put together several years ago, uh, perhaps back maybe circa two thousand thirteen or fourteen. A lot of these projects, uh, have been done, uh, perhaps not at the estimates that we put here, I don't know where this schedule came from. But with the city-acquired facility, there was a lot of deferred maintenance that was done in the first twelve to eighteen months that was pretty much on mechanical systems in the building. And, uh, the city spent somewhere in approaching a hundred and fifty thousand or so, uh, on those things. And it was HPA C related, it was, uh, 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 other mechanical system related. Subsequent to that, the city has done things, lighting, it was a project in the last year to, uh, you know, enhance the, uh, lighting with the installation of LED lighting in the facility. That was at least successful. The parking lot recently finished or almost to be finished. So recently I had discussion with, uh, people from the city center who are, who the city has engaged to, uh, you know, do the janitorial repair maintenance of this building. And, uh, they've identified some outside exterior things, they're not capital so much, but they're more, uh, landscaping related or things that, uh, uh, the, uh, uh, systems that are outside that kind of, uh, you know, provide barrier to, you know, to the gardens that are out there. Uh, there's some, uh, replacement of things that needs to be done, it's, it's rather expensive. I believe that those things will be done come springtime. The roof is another, uh, we're gonna have somebody take a look soon at the roof and make an evaluation of that, uh, you know, to get some better idea of what longer term might be. There's no reason that there, that there's any short-term issues, but, uh, um, we need to get some, some expertise to look at that. And, uh.
So what I'm hearing is done, so we've got parking lot, we've got lighting upgrades, like, is the, is it, what in, what's in?
Keep in mind, this isn't the list that the, that the city came up with, this is the list that came from a few years ago.
Yeah, I mean, I see that, but I mean, there are some things on here that.
Yeah, there are some things to check off, the parking lot, of course, the, the lighting upgrades, a lot of the HVAC stuff.
It's been, there's, there, the two things that, one of the things that will happen this year is the, there's some upgrade that needs to be made to the air handling system. That's been talked about for perhaps a year now. There's no, there's not believed to be any danger, nothing's gonna fail. The city, uh, will receive, is supposed to receive in two thousand twenty, uh, a grant from the state of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. The city will spend a couple hundred thousand dollars for a half million dollar project to address the air handling system. It's somewhat energy improved, improvements. There's some big fans back there that are, that consume a lot of energy, uh, those could be, uh, would be changed. So the idea is that would save some operating expense in the building. That's a big project. The other is the, uh, building signage out front. In fact, that's something that we're gonna have the city center people, uh, might look, uh, might appreciate, look into to see, uh, the lighting on the side is, is failing. And, uh, so I expect that's gonna be taken care of in a relatively short period of time.
Well, and can we ask, I mean, cause we would like it to reflect the library, so if we can either get like vinyl or something that it can be covered, can cover it, you know, with, you know, with our new logo and.
Go and last.
That would, yeah.
And I don't, and I don't know whether that was part of, were there any exterior signs or any of the part of the, uh, any of the space plans that we got to revisit those?
Right. I mean, and I don't necessarily want like a huge difference, but I feel like.
But it does have to work, so I'm assuming that like sockets are rusting out and things like that.
It's not working for a long time.
Right, so I'm assuming it's like not.
But we instructed them to, uh, you know, to find out what the solution is and, uh, you know, let's take care of that in the, in the very near future. You know, with the parking lots, in the batches we've finished, the new lighting there, uh, it will, you know, we can't, uh, really have on the other side of the building if we've got hard lighting that's failing. But in large part, I mean, the, the short answer in large part, there's not a lot of mechanical issues that, that this building has at the present time, okay? Everything, a, a lot of this stuff has been shored up, there's a few things that need, need to be done, the air handling system, uh, and, uh, the other things I've mentioned. But we're continuing to look at those and they'll come up with a report and we'll table that at, at future meetings.
Very good.
Okay? Check register.
So we have to throw us the check register that we have to approve, um, let's see. Anything that we should point out in particular and is there any question? I don't know where we can ask for this stuff here. There wasn't anything that really.
I don't feel like there was anything that jumped out.
Notable, no.
No.
Hepco, Hepco Industries on, I don't know, like the six pages, is there a rather large check? That's our, that's all of our magazines and scriptures for the, tell them. It's a sixteen thousand dollar check.
The check register was approved last week by the Finance Committee, but we do not recommend it for approval at this board.
So. I recommend it for approval to this board.
You're making a motion.
I'm making a motion to accept it as presented.
Sorry, sorry, I was, I was spoke. Aye?
Aye.
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 Then the check register was accepted as presented. Okay.
Okay, the two thousand nineteen budget review and projection, there's a couple of financial schedules in the packet. The library's having, uh, a relatively good year. As of the end of November, uh, this schedule is showing that revenue is exceeding expense by four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The, Rick reported at the Finance Committee meeting that, you know, there's a high-end range, a low-end range. The high-end range would be somewhere in that neighborhood, uh, to have a four hundred thousand dollar surplus and the low-end range was maybe a couple hundred thousand.
Two, two hundred and seven thousand. I think that's probably where we gotta, what we gotta count on, cause I don't know if you've heard any more about the property tax.
The property tax, uh, as of yesterday, their intention is to distribute the taxes before, uh, before the end of the year.
If that happens, then the, the better end is what we're looking for.
So, uh, but we're, you know, we're, uh, we're left to how quickly they can do things in the Treasury Office. We did recommend at the Finance Committee meeting that given that we have the surplus, uh, the possibility to take two hundred thousand dollars and move that into the capital fund. That was approved by the, uh, Finance Committee and recommended to the board that, uh, that be approved here as well. That would take place after we get closer to the end of December, uh, most likely early January, then we have a, a better idea precisely where we end up with the library. And to the extent that, uh, we're above a two hundred thousand dollar surplus, uh, the Finance Committee thought approved to move that money to the capital fund.
Good. All right, yeah, I make a motion.
I second it. On favor of moving two hundred thousand of surplus into our, our capital, uh, fund? Sophia?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion dispass.
And there's also some travel coverage, some expense detail that was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting. Uh, there wasn't anything of significance that I recall, um, so.
Supporting documentation.
Yes. So unless there's, your questions are due, I believe, so I don't know if you guys are still.
Okay, thank you, Bert. The foundation.
Uh, just an update on the annual appeal. As of today, fifty-four hundred dollars. We've got a nice gift today from John Dunn. Told me he wanted to hang on the board and he's going to get it.
Oh, great. Good for him.
Good for him.
We're glad to have, we're very appreciative.
We like that.
Yeah. And it makes me laugh every time he comes in. He always has something to crack me up.
It's that same table with them, Fred, there's something. Okay, Friends of the Library.
So a very interesting meeting. They came to the meeting with some ideas on changing our secretary chair position, which was not discussed with the person in the head of day. So that caused some.
The chair of person?
Yeah. So I expressed my displeasure from that, to the board. I didn't get to do it in the meeting, but it was my last meeting there, so. And it was only discussed, it wasn't affirmed. So it basically, the idea would be to take the secretary chair and maybe get two separate positions with not explaining what would happen to the current person. Take care of that. And she is a.
But they're getting paid. So are they going to pay for both positions or?
We don't.
That's what it looked like.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what it looked like, but we don't know.
They vote on it next month.
They vote on it next month, so.
I'm sure Burson is there.
Um, it is Amy McAvoy. She's been doing it. She's been doing it for ten years. So, um, so that was a little bit of an issue. There was a request for funds for the adult and YO reading, summer, winter reading program, which was two hundred dollars, it's approved. Funds for children's winter reading program is seven hundred and fifty dollars, that was also approved. And Pop Prince requested twenty-four hundred dollars for programs throughout two thousand twenty.
To be absolute clear, Pop Prince has never requested a dime. The library request number they have is non-araryum.
Yes.
Yeah, they don't, they don't charge us anything.
Right. But it's sort of costs and things like that. There are currently three hundred and two members. Jan Matthews spoke in December and had forty-one people. Then next, in January, there's no meeting. Goes between fights in January. And John Shirley, our wonderful, my grace, will be discussing the book to stop a warlord in February fifth. And we've made over eleven hundred dollars for the first books from the Liberty Book Sale, so that's good. They took all the books away, so they are now selling them and we get that, those funds back. And second Saturday sale made about nine hundred dollars, nine hundred and some dollars, I think. Which is good. I mean, I was there and there were a lot of people stopped in, so that was cool. And so they voted to change, we voted to change the elections from January to February just because the first Wednesday could almost, you know, could be New Year's Eve or New Year's Day. So, and then they voted to add a month to the current position, or no, not their current elected positions. And they voted on changing the number of years that one person can serve as chairman of the committee. And through five years, which seems crazy, but, I'm not personally. But the last year must, the person must have a replacement train, a trainee for their last year on the board.
Means you have to have a trainee to get off of the board, isn't that what?
Yeah.
We're not allowed.
I don't know. So I had requested because there were two people going off the board. It was myself and Arthur Gross. We have finished our six-year terms. And so I asked that they consider more diversity and, like, just all kind, any kind of diversity when they're choosing their replacements. Because it's, a lot of, a lot of people are retired on that board. So it's, you know, newer, just people who might, might be working. I mean, even. Yeah, bring something different to the table, yeah, for sure. And, uh, now it is.
So you're going off as of the, as of the end of the year, correct?
Yes.
And I'm taking your place.
Yes.
And the first meeting is in February or January?
No, I think it's Thursday.
Okay, so the meeting, first meeting is in.
I would, I would say that next school year, once September starts, I, I can do that if you want. But I can't do it this year because there's too much going on at this time of day. Okay. So once September starts.
I'll try whoever to get you on the mail, on the email list and get you and Arthur off, I guess.
Okay.
It's at four, it's at four thirty, right?
It's at four.
Four, okay.
And they start, they started at five or four, because I used to show up at four on the dot and it was already started.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I had to drop my daughter off at, she had four o'clock, then I would get there at four, like three fifty-eight, and it's already started.
So it's the third, I'm trying to think, it's the third Thursday, it's the. It's the second.
Today after the finance meeting, usually you must move.
Second Thursday. So I don't.
Because we're in the third Thursday.
I have a third Thursday meeting I have to run. Okay. Okay. Uh, let's see. Illinois Heartland Library System.
Uh, Executive Council meeting, it was a recap of the membership voting that happened in, in November. And the most important thing for us to know is that the piece, the fee increase schedule for the next few years was approved by IHL's membership. They did go with the more gradual rather than what they were going to do, which is a big win next year and then dropping off. It didn't make sense. But a lot of libraries struggling to figure out how to make them have a wage payment, so. More gradual. That's the, that was the big thing.
And we'll see, old business, I don't think we have any old business. We've talked, we've talked about a lot of old business in the course of the various cities. And I don't think we have a new business other than what we've talked about in the course of the news.
Of course, dangers is easy.
Of course, and.
We meet all these dangers. If we have any questions about anyone, we'd be happy to. These are, this is the one that, you know, you kind of got to knock out of the park.
Okay, very good.
I made a motion for your second.
Aye.
Thank you so much.